Mr. Hoffs is here. Terry can't join us today, so I'll be trying to run the meeting in her stead. So if you all please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America.
Thank you. Um. Is there anyone would like to speak from the public today? Anybody online? That has public. Comments?
Comment. Good morning, Commissioners. Just kind of heads up. We're gonna be starting our crack seal and chip sealing on our paved roads. Probably this week and for the next couple of weeks, three weeks. There Jake and I and Karen are working on putting together a map, but on the website. So there'd be some hopefully some information there.
Oh, like scheduling related and which roads are gonna be when?
Right, that's what we're hoping anyway. And and this this with this chip seal, we're doing a fog coat. So hopefully we will not have the issues. And before with the loose tips, there may be loose for the first couple of days before they get the fog coat on, but. Hopefully the fog coat will take care of that issue.
Thanks.
You're gonna replace your windchill. You might wait until after.
Is there anyone else like to make a public comment? I move we close the public comment. Can I? I can second.
Yeah, Terry can hear.
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Alright, are there any considerations for the change in the agenda? I knew it.
Please, please shut off. I need to remove. Item. Twenty-two. I need to talk about Anthony James, someone who thinks and see if we need to add currently just the courthouse. I need to see if we need to add other buildings. And I need to add an item. That was emailed to you last night, which is to present for approval of First Amendment to.
Already added.
Oh, thank you.
It's item, item twenty-three, right?
Perfect.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So item twenty-three, twenty-four was already on there. So one gets us to the date and the other one allows for RFP.
The First Amendment.
Is that right? Item twenty-three?
Yes.
Alrighty. Looking right along. Are there any disclosures?
None for me.
I don't believe I have any.
I have none.
Alright, and with that, I entertain a motion to approve and consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. One of the regular agenda and. So item number eight, taking the table renewal of restaurant liquor license.
If Chair, I move do we take from the table the renewal of the restaurant license?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye. Thanks, lad.
I'll work through it. It's a it's a light day, I hope.
Well, me too.
And then item number nine, present for approval renewal of liquor license.
Good morning, my vice chair and commissioners. At the last meeting, I asked to table the renewal of the restaurant liquor license for Old Corral. LLC doing business as Old Corral due to the fact that their food permit was in the wrong name. I got confirmation yesterday with the copy of the new food permit that now it isn't the correct name and they're all good to go, so.
Do you have any concerns at all about it?
No, no. When they transferred the license, they had it in the previous. Or they had it in the trade name and not in the LLC is what it was held in, in that the Liquor Commission asked that it please be held in the LLC. So they just had to get it transferred through the Department of Ag, so.
Okay, I move that we approve the renewal of the restaurant liquor license for Old Corral LLC.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item number ten, present for approval of the termination agreement between the Board of County Commissioners of Albany County, Wyoming and Volunteers of America North Rockies for provision of. Six mental health. Health first aid trainings.
Good morning, Andrew. Good morning, Commissioners. Looking to terminate a couple of agreements, prevention agreements with Volunteers of America. They've had some pretty significant staff turnover and are unable to to meet the requirements of these agreements that were put in place last year.
Andrew is, it's maybe my memory is faulty, but it seemed like there was a stipend that was associated. Some sort of funding is associated with the performance of this contract. Would that be flawed back?
The like the mental health first aid trainers? We I collect like pre and post survey evaluations that I submit to Department of Health. But none of that depended on their their trainer fees or anything like that. The trainer fees were just written into the contract what they what they would charge to put on those trainings. But in terms of receiving funding to do those trainings, there was no stipulation on like the pre and post surveys. Did that answer your question?
Were they paid to do the mental health training?
They were. Yep, they did three last year. The person that was certified to give the trainings has left BOA.
So they only got paid for the three.
They got paid for three, yes.
Okay.
They're not.
They did fulfill half of the contract.
So that they don't.
They're not in breach.
There's.
Okay, super. Thank you. Do we approve the termination of agreement between the Board of Commissioners of the County of Albany, Wyoming and Volunteers of America North Rockies? For the provision of six mental health first aid trainings as presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. And item number eleven, present for approval termination of agreement between the Board of County Commissioners of Albany County, Wyoming and Volunteers of America North Rockies for tobacco cessation services. Andrew.
Similar to the last one, pretty significant staff turnover. They've been unable to host or. Train any staff to do tobacco cessation classes for quite some time. So looking to terminate that contract and reevaluate where those tobacco prevention funds are spent. Either with a different organization or reallocate them for some other form of tobacco prevention funding, tobacco prevention program going forward.
And I'll ask you the same question, Andrew, whether they paid for what they did or?
They were, yes.
What are? There are obviously other options then to use some of this funding.
Yeah, so the the funding has to stay within tobacco prevention. I have to meet like certain percentage requirements in different areas like suicide prevention, tobacco, opioids, different things like that. So. It'll stay in tobacco prevention. One idea I've had is, you know, we were trying to do like community based trainings. I've thought about doing more like employer based trainings approaching, let's say, you know, not. Don't have anything scheduled, but approaching the county, for example, and and hosting a tobacco prevention class for the the staff, different things like that. Just a different idea to get some more involvement and make those classes more successful.
Correct.
I move we approve the termination of agreement between the Board of Commissioners of the County of Albany, Wyoming and Volunteers of America North Rockies for tobacco cessation services as presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Alright, present for approval the funding for Wyoming Department of Health pursuant to Title IX, Section twenty-four. Subsection one oh four for the purpose of funding county health programs to prevent and treat problematic gambling behavior in the amount of twenty-eight thousand, seven hundred and one dollars and twenty-four cents for the fiscal year twenty-six.
The twenty-eight thousand, seven hundred and one dollars is the Albany County's allocation of gambling prevention funding for this year. So just looking to accept that so we can. Do more gambling prevention work in Albany County.
I move that we approve the funding for the Wyoming Department of Health for gambling prevention as presented in the amount of twenty-eight thousand, seven hundred and one dollars, twenty-four cents.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item thirteen, present for approval grant application for America's two-hundred-fiftieth. Grant Wyoming County and tribal application through the Wyoming State Parks and Cultural Resources Office. In the amount of ten thousand dollars for coordinating and marketing services and materials for the semi-quintcentennial celebration in Albany County.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is the same application we've been talking about for a few meetings now. Karen is on. Gwendolyn was having IT issues. But if you have questions, Karen's on and can answer it because we're partnering with them to do this application.
Don't have any questions. Karen, I really, you you guys are gonna be just kind of the. The ringleaders for this endeavor. So do you have any comment?
Um, so it's actually Gwen because Karen come and so she forwarded me her link. Sorry. I mean, I sent Bailey the draft and she made a minor change to it, I think. Um, we've got our agreements in place with um. Uh, the University of Wyoming Honors College and Albany County Tourism. So I think everyone's on board and prepared to have an intern. Um, I'll be advertising it with Chris Rothfuss at the Fall Internship Fair. So hopefully we get a good intern. In the marketing coordinator position. Do you guys have any questions about the grant application?
I don't.
Yeah, Gwendolyn, if if two or more parties want to use that in the exact same time as they're in process for splitting their time or how do you think about that?
Um, so part of the the way I'm. Uh, trying to work through that is that part of the intern's job would be trying to avoid helping organizations avoid time conflicts. So part of their work would be coordinating events so that we don't have overlap of two-fiftieth events. Um, but I think they would just have to split their time equally between organizations. So say there's a busy Saturday with two events. And they want the person, they're both, they would just have to go fifty-fifty on their time. Um, I did include like a checkout system for marketing materials in the grant. So Albany County Tourism would have items just like the library would for checkout that are. Use the branding for the two-fiftieth that the state has designed. Um, so they could market their event as a two-fiftieth event without the marketing coordinator necessarily being there. For example, they could check out. Um. A tent canopy that has that branding on it. And so everyone would be able to know from the street visually that it's a two-fiftieth event. Without necessarily having that coordinator at the event.
And then after it's done, Gwendolyn, the tent and who this whose property does that become? Is that the Tourism Board? Who's in charge of that county?
It would be Albany County Historic Preservation Boards, since we are the grant recipient as far as I understand it. So I don't know, we would have to like donate it or try to change some of the stuff and use it for our own events in the future. Um, if Albany County Tourism wanted it, I don't see any problem with the Preservation Board just giving them the the checkout materials.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Okay. Commissioner Jones, do you have any questions?
I do not. Thank you.
I move we approve the grant application for the America two-fifty grants Wyoming County and tribal application. As presented in the amount of ten thousand dollars.
Second.
Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, item fourteen, discuss the temporary assistance for needy families. TANF CFDA numbers nine-three dot five-five-eight fiscal year twenty-twenty-six. Grant between the Wyoming Department of Family Services and Albany County Commissioners.
So this is our TANF CPI grant. It is money that's passed down to us nonprofits. Um. We did find out this year that we will be just they will just be doing an amendment to our current agreement for this funding, the same amount as last year. So what I need to know from you all Tuesday is how would you like to go about this with our sub recipients? Um, my recommendation is not to have them fill out a whole application since we didn't have to fill out a whole application. But you could do a couple of things. You could fund them the same amount as last year. Or you could have them submit new budgets and then you guys could reallocate the funding that way. The total amount that the county receives is a hundred and twelve thousand dollars, so.
And how is that currently dispersed?
I need to. So I had it ready. Let's see, um. Cathedral Home Extended Families gets seventeen thousand, eight hundred and eighty-five dollars. Klein Wyoming thirty-three thousand and one dollar. Interfaith thirty-eight thousand, five hundred and sixty-two dollars. Big Brothers Big Sisters nineteen thousand, three hundred and fifty-three dollars. And our indirect cost is three thousand, one hundred and ninety-nine dollars.
Okay. Can you give me those one more time?
Yeah, of course. So Cathedral Home Extended Families is seventeen thousand, eight hundred and eighty-five. Klein thirty-three thousand and one dollar. Interfaith thirty-eight thousand, five sixty-two. Big Brothers Big Sisters nineteen thousand, three fifty-three. And our indirect cost for the county is three thousand, one hundred and ninety-nine.
Okay.
The same amount, I guess.
Is there any need to diversify or allow any other agencies access to it?
Um, I would not recommend that this year because we didn't go through the application process. So we we should only be able. To fund who was already involved in our original application, which was last year, which is those four. Um. As long as funding comes back next year, they'll open that back up.
Okay.
Um, but that would be, I don't think that the state would allow us to do that.
Commissioner Jones, do you have any questions?
No, thank you.
You just need direction.
I just need direction. Do you want me to put out a new budget sheet, make them fill it out? Do you want me to just tell them we're gonna be funding them the same amount as last year, just like we're funded the same amount? How? I just want a little direction. How you guys would like me to about this?
I guess I. I would. It'd be interesting just to say we would like to fund you at the same amount as last year. Please tell us if that's not accurate or not something that we we need to consider something else and why. Um, or just fund them at the same amount. I don't want to make any more effort for them or you.
And we do not have our amendment, our amendment yet. I don't anticipate getting that till August or September. But because everything has been so delayed this year, I want to be ready to roll so that we're not holding up our nonprofits.
You you don't foresee any reason why they would request less money?
I don't see why they would request less. I know why they would request more. Yeah, I mean, maybe somebody would surprise me, but I kind of doubt it.
And do we need to have any accounting for how they use the money or how that?
We do. I mean, they report back to us. Some of them report monthly, some of them report quarterly. It's kind of.
But it's all accounted for.
Absolutely, yes.
I do. We don't need to make.
You don't need to make a motion. So same amount, is that what I'm hearing? Okay, that's what we'll do. Thank you, Commissioners.
Excellent. Item fifteen, present for approval grant agreement between Wyoming Department of Health, Public Health Division. And Albany County Public Health for the Public Health Preparedness Program in the amount not to exceed eighty-three thousand dollars from July one, twenty-twenty-five. Through June thirty, twenty-twenty-six. And Bailey, you're.
Yes, so. This was supposed to be just a simple approval of the agreement. However. Last week on Thursday, myself, Kim and Zach sat on a call with the state. This program at this time. So this program is money passed through the CDC. The CDC at this time only has seventy-two percent of the total funding that they were supposed to have for this funding. So the direction we got from the state was they want us to go ahead and approve the current agreements because it takes so long to get it through the AG's office. However. They only want us to use that funding right now for salary and fringe. There are a few other possibilities to get these cell phones paid out of it, but I have to reach out to them. She Cheryl was, the state is working on an official letter that's currently with the AG that's coming to us. Um, with all this information in it, too. So today I needed to approve the agreement so we can move forward because we do have one salary on that. And, um. We need to, Zach and Kim and I have talked about where could he cut? He has about ten thousand dollars. Um. That's not salary fringe in that grant.
So we're actually talking about sixty thousand, five hundred and ninety dollars.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So I mean, we, Zach's prepared to cut just about everything in his budget. The phones are important, so we are gonna try to reach out to the state and see if we can get that. Got a little bit of approval for that. The other thing that is important is he runs a storage unit that's temperature controlled for all these supplies that are. Handed to us basically from the state. It includes, what is it called? It includes masks.
So is the is our portion of the Strategic National Scott Cloud? So it's N ninety-five respirators, gowns, nitro gloves. And an example of when it was used is during COVID, when the jail was running low, I took them gloves and masks and they didn't have to. There was no reimbursement. It was just they get the supplies. Because there was an emergency declared and was able to hand it up. So it's there to be dispersed when there's an emergency.
So that's about thirty-one hundred dollars a year that we're gonna have to. Their paper, their budget, find a new space for it. Zach has reached out to other storage companies in the area that are temperature controlled. There's not a lot and they're a higher price than what we're currently paying.
What are the requirements for the storage?
So respirators and gloves are temperature sensitive. So if they exceed the temperature or below certain temperature, it breaks down the carbon filters and makes the masks useless.
Okay.
Um, and so it's a, I don't know the the thresholds, but it's just, you know, a room in an indoors room, you know, that doesn't get too hot and doesn't get too cold.
Okay.
Now, what's the space of the current one again?
So it's ten by twenty.
And it's full.
It's two hundred square feet of, does the county have any?
To remain compliant with the grant, it is all ramped up in that storage unit right now, or else we have to match.
Yeah, so.
I'm not gonna look at Rob.
So I mean, that's this, we can talk about this in budget later. I just wanted you to be aware of it going into physical agreement. Everything else, the supplies, the trailer maintenance, the travel can all be cut. And that's what we intend to do. And the cell phones, we are gonna see if we can. That extra little extra funding, but they didn't, they storage units were an okay thing, just cell phones. So once I get that letter from the state, I'll then reach back out. Okay, we need our two thousand dollars worth of phones and.
Okay, so you're, but right now, as it stands, you're losing about twenty-two thousand dollars out of what?
No, about.
Did you say point?
About ten, eleven.
Seventy-three percent?
Seventy-two percent from the CDC is cut, so, um. Our portion was just about ten thousand, eleven thousand dollars. So again, we're all hoping this is gonna come through, you know, August, September, but we don't know at this time. And instead, and once the state knows for sure what's happening, we will see an amendment if we do have to completely cut it back down to personnel. Or we won't see an amendment. We get to move forward and we'll receive another letter. Um, but they didn't want to move forward with an amendment or new agreements at this time because it takes so long and we need to be under contract by the first of the, the first of the fiscal year.
So eighty-three thousand is the full amount?
Eighty-three thousand is the full amount, and that's the same amount we received last year. It pays for the salary fringe and then the eleven thousand dollars worth of other things. This grant does require a match and the county does match the health insurance of Zach for Zach. So that's the math requirement. One of the things we've talked about on that call, and there was a lot of concern about is we don't want the county necessarily to pick up. Expenses. Because then we're, then we could be supplanting, which we don't want to get in that mess either, which during budget, I'll talk about another issue. But, um, so we don't want to do that, but they're they're telling us, no, it's gonna be okay. It's gonna be put in the letter, all this. Again, Zach was able to purchase a bunch of supplies this year with the closeout of his grant. So he should be good to get through that. And then next year, see, I don't know what the future's gonna hold for this funding.
Like, that's. Yeah.
But at least it's enough, this grant right now currently has enough funding to get all the personnel on this grant throughout the state through June twenty-twenty-six. Everybody kind of agreed that that's what we need to focus on is. So. What we, I'd like you to do is, if you want to approve the agreement that's in front of you for the eighty-three thousand dollars. When I receive that letter, I will. Get it to Jennifer to review it and then I'll pass it off to you all. I don't think you need to. Okay.
As long as the amount the contracts agree upon?
Yeah, and I I don't know exactly know what the letter's gonna say. I doubt it's gonna be like specific to each county.
Well, this isn't what was in the packet then?
No, that the agreement that's in the packet is our agreement. That's the amount we're supposed to receive if the CDC gets full funding for this grant. So.
Okay.
That makes sense.
I move that we approve the grant agreement between the Wyoming Department of Health, Public Health Division and Albany County Public Health. For the Public Health Preparedness Program in an amount not to exceed eighty-three thousand dollars from July first, twenty-twenty-five through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-six.
I'll second.
Oh, I'm sorry. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Alright, item sixteen, ratified letter of support for the Albany County Fairgrounds Wyoming Intertie Community Investment Program Application. Haley.
So this is a letter. This grant came across my desk Wednesday last week. I talked to Taylor. We pulled something together real quick. And the fairgrounds submitted on their own through their five oh one C three, their Fair Alumni Association. It's a five oh one C three. However, we did help them because we do have a contract with them that we would help them with their funding. So. Um, one of the things that it did need was letters of support. Um, I reached out to Fisher Hoss to come in and sign a letter of support for that. The project is to redo the roof on the rodeo office building.
Not to be overly, the first sentence of the second paragraph. On off is right next to each other and it makes very difficult reading. And Sean needs to be removed. The roof.
Oh, yeah, singles flying on off and the gutter step fallen off. Shingles flying on, probably doesn't.
That went out on Monday, so.
Yeah, that's true, yeah.
Flew on there and stayed.
Well, that's what happened on my room. Um, I move we ratify the letter of support for the Albany County Fairgrounds Wyoming Intertie Community Investment Program Application.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item seventeen, present for approval purchase agreement with Thermo Fisher Scientific for Drug Testing Analyzer.
Commissioners. And Jen and Bailey, feel free to fix anything that I mess up. Um, we are looking to enter into an agreement with Thermo Fisher. Which would include purchasing a drug testing analyzer. This would bring drug testing for our court supervised treatment programs in-house. Um, this analyzer will give us significantly more reliable results compared to the. Presumptive cups that we are running now. Um. This contract is the capital purchase, excuse me, of the analyzer. Would include the company coming out, doing setup, providing two to three days of training. Um, the hope is also down the road that the drug testing could become a revenue source for. Drug court program by offering it to courts, DFS, potentially hiring for HR for the county. Um, so kind of looking long term, this will be a benefit in addition to. Right now, being able to provide more quality testing for our participants. And the funds have been identified through match funds in some of our S R.
Mr. Chair, Heather, any training requirements for your staff to run the computer?
Yes, that is the company coming out and they'll provide that training to myself, our staff, or sorry, my adult case manager. Potentially our adult probation agent and internally it will become trainers. So any staff that we would need to. Train thereafter, we would be able to certify to do that.
Okay, twelve month warranty, but seventy-eight, twenty annual cost for that to.
That will be the ongoing warranty. The warranty is tied into the first year that identifies. Sorry, that that's tied into our original capital purchase and then thereafter would be the the seventy. the seventy, eight hundred that would cover the warranty going forward. And they did modify the contract that we are year to year instead of a five year that they originally wanted because of our grant funding. So if we were to lose funding, we would be able to terminate the contract.
And then how is the testing done? Is it done with reagents with?
It is reagents. We would have, at this point, we're looking at purchasing, um, and it will be spread out over the year because reagents have a expiration date. Um, so we would order batches of reagents as we need them. But we're looking at approximately a seventeen panel reagent that we would test that would be varied, so it would be more quality testing um, as well as adulterants built in, um, oxygen, specific gravity, um, and two more. That helps with the validity of testing.
And then do you have to have a, is this cold storage and do you have to have a fridge with two to eight degrees Celsius?
We do, that's locking.
Okay, and is that part of this or would you have to go out and purchase that?
We would have to purchase the fridge.
And then is this a blood draw or?
Your analysis.
Your analysis.
Yes, um, your analysis, so what we would need for this test is um, milliliters compared to what we currently need for the cups, for the cups to read and then be able to send to a lab. Um, much smaller quantity that we would need for testing, again, much accurate, more accurate results. We have a lot of cross, um, false positives for medication that show up in the cups that we're using right now, which in turn causes a lot of stress for participants because, you know, they're showing fentanyl, but it comes back negative because it's a medication that's crossing. This will take that out. In addition, we will get more quantitative results right. Um, the sample, once we test it, will be able to give us levels of the substance versus creatinine, which is one of the adulterants we measure against. Whereas now we're paying thirty dollars a test, mail those off to figure out those levels. This analyzer will automatically give it to us.
Is this amount, including the number of reagents times whatever they cost? Plus this and then the annual, is that less money than what you're currently spending to do lesser testing?
This first year with the capital purchase will be about equal what we spent last year. Um, we have so far in the last year, probably spent about eight thousand dollars in confirmations that we're mailing off to the lab. Um, this will take care of probably ninety percent of those. Um, so our first year will be pretty equal to what we spent last year. Um, thereafter, we will save money because we will just then be purchasing the reagents, um, which will be between fifteen to twenty-four thousand, depending on what we, um, order for reagents. If there's a new drug that gets approved for testing, that might be a little higher initially. Also, if we're able to improve or increase our volume of testing, then our reagent costs will go down. Um, so if down the future and that's down the future, then we, you know, we are able to become revenue producing, um, for those, then those costs will go down for the program as well.
Revenue producing, um, would you be offering this to the, to the general public or what?
I've not talked about general public at this point. It would be purely like, um, coordinating with DFS. They have cases, DFS pays somebody right now as a contract to do those tests. Um, court ordered people that are court ordered self-pay. Um, so that's the only avenues we're looking right now. I have touched on it with, um, Anisa, if the possibility is there, because the county does contract, um, for just initial hires, we couldn't do.
Randoms?
Exactly, or for calls. Yeah, um, we couldn't do that because we couldn't provide the immediacy of that. Um, so just ideas that have been kicked around would not be for general public at this point.
Would that potentially bring staff into the courtroom setting where they had to testify to the results and would that?
So.
Problems?
Potentially could be just on the collection. There is a lab, um, that would still do confirmations. It's the LSGSCMI, whatever, that courts accept, um, and that lab would be able to, uh, testify about confirmations and all of.
Your staff or whoever did the actual sampling and testing wouldn't be pulled from their normal duties, staff didn't testify in the work as.
Doesn't happen that often. Um, if there was a question about chain of custody, which is part of our training that we would do, um, then I guess potentially, uh, but right now, I would say in the last three years, we have not had it happen.
But for the most part, this is just to support your program.
Correct. Yes.
Final question, sorry about all the questions, but I've been down this road with our lab at the clinic and planned obsolescence of this machine. Um, they sometimes will work just fine, but they won't be able to get reagents or cartridges, um, because they move on. So you have a wonderful machine that you can't get stuff forgotten. Did you talk with them about the company or to the company and say, when is your plan removal of my ability to use this machine?
I honestly have not had that conversation and something that I can follow up on. Um, this is their newest model, but of course they're, you know, at some point will phase out as well as reagents. Um, the program up in Campbell County has worked with Thermo Fisher for oh, I think he said like seven or eight years, they have an analyzer. Um, and they have one of the old analyzers. Um, we had, this is the newer model and the reagents are still working there. Um, so they do have, um, a pretty good history with or it being, um, still working together, but I can have that conversation.
Heather, thank you for doing all the research and answering all my questions.
From the contract, it looks like they're willing to offer a warranty of five years.
Absolutely.
So, okay.
And that's coming out, um, at least once a year, changing rotors, um, oiling everything, and that's them physically coming out and doing that with the machine in addition to any support we would need during the time.
I have no more questions, sorry.
Oh, I do have one question. Um, and this is something that's, I mean, this is out of my normal realm of, well, what about if you were able to purchase the the cups, I guess, ahead? So we would have cups in case it gets, um, goes past its useful life and you can't get more things, but it's still working well? Is that a viable idea?
Um, can you say that again, Terry? I'm sorry.
It's a little confusing. So with the planned obsolescence in some things, would it be advantageous to purchase a head on the cups? That you use?
I understand.
Okay.
So the cups also have a expiration date. Um, and they're, they're shorter than the assays right now. We do currently, um, work with, it's called National Test Systems, um, in addition to another company called Abbott, and we do purchase cups from them right now, and we would be able to continue that if there were any issues. I would keep a stock of, you know, a case of cups in case there was an issue with um, the machine and they're really good at shipping fast. If I place an order, I usually have them within three days.
Very good, thank you.
Is some of it proprietary in some, but not proprietary, non-proprietary, as long as there's an expiration?
No idea what that means, I'm sorry.
No, I, if a reagent from one company won't work, won't function in another company's machine, if they're serialized or that kind of thing?
So there, um, some of them are proprietary, some of them are just improved, approved in general by FDA. Um, they, and as they come out with new ones, one company might have, uh, an assay sooner than the other one. There are companies that you can buy outside of Thermo Fisher. Um, the issue becomes there is calibration, um, and if it's calibrated at a different level than the one from Thermo Fisher.
Yeah, yes, I have, have no experience with this machine, but the machines I've had experience with, it's not so much the cups that expire, it's the tests themselves or the assay or the reagents. So they have a shelf life of ninety days, six months.
Once they're open, yeah, then it's a shorter one. If it's in the fridge being stored, it can go eighteen to twenty-four months.
How many tests do you do annually now?
So, good question. Um, the way that we've broke it down, so our cups are sixteen panel cups or fifteen panel cup. And how the company did it was each one of those substances is a test. So it looks way more intimidating, um, than the cups that we've done, but we're averaging about seven thousand tests. Um, of those different substances. And really, like, we're getting the, the higher level cup to have the adulterant, um, but we're stuck with those sixteen tests. So if anybody's using anything outside of that, whereas this will be able to random.
So if you have a client that is strictly restricted, if you're just worried about one substance, you can just perform that one specific test.
Hundred percent.
And not have to deal with the.
Yeah, which will be a dollar to do that test versus now we're paying the cup plus the witness and all them.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any questions? If not, I'll make a motion.
Yeah, it sounds cost effective, so.
Yeah. I move that we approve the purchasing agreement with Thermo Fisher Scientific for a drug testing analyzer.
Thank you.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item eighteen, present for approval, the utility license for Bass Sisters LLC on County Road two forty-one, Pumpkinvine Road, located in southwest quarter of section thirty-six Township thirteen, North Range seventy-two Wests, Mr. Fisher.
Commissioners, uh, Bass Sisters would like to, uh, uh, put a water line under the road to go to the, from their well to diversify their um, water tanks and the pastures for both wildlife and livestock.
Any issues?
No issues.
Move to approve utility license for the Bass Sisters LLC as presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item nineteen, present for approval, utility license for Black Hills Energy on County Road seventeen, Rogers Canyon Road, located in section twenty-one and twenty-two Township sixteen, Rain, North Range, seventy-three West.
This is just to, uh, uh, add a gas line under Rogers Canyon Road. No issues with it?
I move to approve the utility license for Black Hills Energy as presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item twenty, present for approval, small enterprise agreement between Albany County Commissioners of the County of Albany and Environmental Systems Research Institute, Inc. By and through the County, Albany County Assessors Office for the annual subscription renewal.
Good morning. Uh, this is just the annual, or it's actually a three-year contract with Esri, also known as Arc Pro or ArcMap. I had spoke about during the three budget hearings how this contract had changed a little bit, and so, um, here it is, just in writing.
Move that we approve the small enterprise agreement between Albany County Commissioners and the County of Albany Environmental System Research Institute. Uh, as presented at item twenty.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item twenty-one, Chelsea, you, oh, you haven't had that. Present for approval, agreement between Board of County Commissioners, the County of Albany, Wyoming, by and through the Albany County Assessors Office and Thomas Y. Pickett and Company for Industrial Appraisal Services.
Yep, so this is just renewal of our contract with T Y Pickett. Just a reminder that we are adding Lucky Star and Rail Tie to the contracts, and then we also are um, increasing the fee for mountain cement because they're putting in that new kiln and for peatling because they're putting in that new rail cart that's tying into the railway.
Okay. Chelsea, thanks for that. The, the front page with the crosses out and the dates crossed out and the, did we get that reformatted? I, I've guessed.
I missed it. So, and then I sent it over for Bob to sign and he caught it. So, yeah, I can absolutely do that and get, get an updated one.
Do we need to table it?
Um, I, I'm ready to approve it with those changes if, if that's all right.
Yeah.
Yeah. I move to, we approve the agreement for the, between the Board of Commissioners of the County of Albany, Wyoming, by and through the Albany County Assessors Office, Thomas Y. Pickett and Company, Inc., for Industrial Appraisal Services. With the changes, uh, as presented on page one.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item twenty-two was removed. Item twenty-three, present for approval, first amendment to the, to amend and rest stated contract between the Board of County Commissioners of Albany County, Wyoming and W W C Engineering for Engineering Services.
Good morning again. So this is an amendment to extend that agreement for a period of a month because we have the RFP, which is our next item, so that will give us enough time to get RFP back and get a new contract in place with the person that we award the RFP to.
I move that we approve the first amendment to the amended and restated contract between the Board of Commissioners of the County of Albany, Wyoming and W W C Engineering for Engineering Services.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item twenty-four, present for approval, request proposal for civil engineering for county contracted engineering services and direct the clerk to advertise.
So this is the RFP for those engineering services. We've had W W C Engineering, um, as our contracted engineer, but, and we don't have any issues with them, but it has been, they've been under contract under our old RFP for four years. So our policy in the past has been we put out a contract, it's a two-year contract. We renewed it once, but then we need to go back out to RFP to make sure we're, where we need to be.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, uh, item twenty-four on the publicized packet was item twenty-five on our agenda.
She amended the agenda this morning, so if you have the old, if you're looking at the packet, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah.
I haven't looked at it. I know she resented it out this morning. So you, I don't know if you download the packet, Pete, ahead of.
I do, yeah, I do.
That's why. Sorry, she sent it out this morning. Kami did, she amended the agenda, so.
Yeah, just so we line up so that.
It will be, it should be lined up now on there, yeah.
Because I downloaded the night before.
Yeah.
And.
Yeah.
To make sure that I have the most recent.
Yeah, and she did it this morning, so my apologies. I should have told you that this morning, Pete.
No worries, I just wanted to make sure that when we were working on, matched with what the public could see.
No, I, I appreciate that.
I, I moved to approve the request for proposal for civil engineer for county contracted engineering services and direct the clerk to advertise.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Item twenty-five, present for approval, power of attorney for T A, T A L X U C M Services, Inc., a provider of Equifax service workforce solutions.
So we utilize Equifax for our unemployment hearings and things. This power of attorney, they've changed addresses again. There are three or four selections on there about what we want to have for them as our power of attorney, and I reached out to Anisa and Kayla both, and their recommendation would be that we have, we initial so that all of them mailed um, notices get sent to us. And then we can notify Equifax when we need their services or help with an unemployment hearing. They will have access to our online board, so they can get in there and get all of that when they need it. But then we're certain that we have timely notice of everything that's mailed from the state.
There are no questions. I move to approve our attorney for TUX U C M Services, Inc., a provider of Equifax workforce solutions as presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, item twenty-six, present for approval, application for catering permit for the Trading Post Centennial LLC for the C V H A fundraiser museum held on, at the backyard of the Trading Post Park located at twenty-seven fifty-three State Highway one thirty, Centennial, Wyoming on August second, twenty twenty-five from twelve PM to nine PM.
Good morning. This is a catering permit, sorry, a catering permit for the Trading Post. They have a little backyard uh, park behind the bar there, and they like to have events back there. So their dispensing room obviously is within the bar, so in order for them to dispense alcohol in the back, they have to have a catering permit and everything is good to go.
There are no questions. I approve, I move to approve the application for catering permit for Trading Post Centennial LLC for the C V H A fundraiser, fundraiser on August second, twenty twenty-five from Gulf PM to nine PM as presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Item twenty-seven, present for approval, application for catering permit for the Trading Post Centennial LLC for the town party held at the backyard of the Trading Post Park located at twenty-seven fifty-three.
for the town party held at the backyard of the Trading Post Park located at twenty-seven fifty-three Wyoming State Highway one thirty, Centennial, Wyoming, August nineteenth, twenty twenty-five from twelve PM to nine PM.
So this is another event in there back on a different date. And everything's good to go.
There are no questions. I move to approve the catering permit for Trading Post Centennial LLC from August nineteenth, twenty twenty-five from twelve PM to nine PM.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Item twenty-eight, present for approval, annual compensation agreement between the University of Wyoming and the Commissioners of Albany County for the extension program from July first, twenty twenty-five through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six in the amount of twenty-four thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Um, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, the university with the extension agent that we have Amanda, she, we pay, the county pays half of the salary for that. Uh, we got the annual compensation agreement in, uh, last week, um, so that it does not lapse, so that it's good to go for this next fiscal year. I figured we probably should get it on Jennifer and I both reviewed it. The exact same agreement as we had as last year. Uh, the cost has not gone up. It was the same money we had budgeted. So that is the agreement between the county and UW for the extension position.
No discussion? Then I have not, you know, make a motion if anybody else ever has a question. I move to approve the annual compensation agreement between the University of Wyoming and Commissioners of Albany County for the extension program from July first, twenty twenty-five through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six in the amount of twenty-four thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Item twenty-eight, set a special meeting to approve the Albany County budget.
I should have just stayed up here. So, uh, I just wanted to make sure, I didn't want to put a date on there. We had tentatively looked at June thirtieth, uh, the special meeting at nine thirty to approve the budget. I just wanted to make sure that that was good with you guys. I had not brought it forward to set that special meeting. Unless you guys have a different date that you would like to do. Of course, we have a meeting the next day as well. Um, but in the past, um, how many years we have had our budget hearing to approve the budget prior to the first day of the fiscal year because we feel like we should approve our budget before we spend our money. Um, so, uh, we have historically done that. We would like to continue to do that. So my question is, is does June thirtieth work or does a different date? We just have to advertise the proposed budget seven days prior to the public hearing. So, um, we'll have to advertise it on Saturday because that's the only day we can advertise it because the paper only, you know, advertises Wednesday through Saturday. So, um, if that date is fine with you guys, we can set it for June thirtieth unless we need to do it. We can do it at any time that day. It's really up to you guys what you guys would like to do, so.
If you had a blackout and we had no electricity and we had it scheduled for the thirtieth, would we still be able to comply with our statutory?
I think we would have to. I think we, I mean, we would, so we have to advertise seven days prior, of course, in our, in our proposed, um, the proposed budget that we advertised, we state the date of the public hearing. So we would have to have the black, the public hearing. And good thing we have generators. So hopefully we wouldn't have a blackout. So that's a really good question, Pete. I don't know. That'd probably be a question for Jennifer.
I think we'd still have to have a public.
Yeah.
We would just have to.
The public hearing has to happen?
Yeah.
From my understanding now, I imagine just like liquor licenses, you can have your public hearing, but then not approve the actual license. I suppose it could be the same.
I haven't looked at the budget.
I know, I'd have to look at it.
But if we advertise the hearing, I mean, we could always, we can continue the hearing to a later time if we had to, like if power was out at nine thirty and we needed to continue it later, we could do that.
Yeah.
If you're concerned, we could set it, the hearing earlier.
Yeah, we can do it. I just have to be able to advertise seven days before. That's the only.
Well, we can have the hearing and set it or approve it, continue it, uh, another hearing within forty-eight hours to comply with state statutes.
If an emergency meeting?
If we had to do an emergency meeting. So we could, we could hold a, a public vote within that time period.
Yes, yes.
Beyond. Okay, if you're not concerned, I'm not concerned. I just have never.
Couldn't, we could move it from, couldn't we move it outside on the lawn?
We could continue it from the meeting room to another location.
If we need to, we do have it, hopefully. I'm hoping. Now hate you, Jesus. Never thought about it, yeah. We've, we've always done it. Of course, it's never, usually it falls on the Friday prior to, so then you have the weekend uh, before the first of July, but this time, of course, it just fell the day before the, the first and the first is a Tuesday as well.
Do we need to roll it back to the Friday?
No. I don't see any reason why we need to. Um, I just wanted to leave it up to you guys as to when you guys would like the meeting. If you're fine with it on June thirtieth, is nine thirty good? Do you want to do a different time? I just have to know the time so I can put it in the.
It just has to be.
Nine thirty is good for me.
Nine thirty works for me. Yeah, I'm saying.
Okay, perfect. Then we'll do it June thirtieth at nine thirty. Thank you.
Do you need a motion or anything or we just set the?
We can just.
Okay. Alrighty, item thirty, uh, approve payroll and vouchers for June twenty twenty-five.
I move that we pay, uh, payroll and vouchers for June twenty twenty-five.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.
Thank you. Thank you, Ted, very much. Appreciate your help.
And we're going to be back at one o'clock, right?
We do have a work session at one o'clock, Terry. Uh, if you're able to jump back on.
I will.
I think that they'll set up a new Zoom link, so I will forward that on to you. Okay?
Okay.
All right. Terry, did you get that, um, spreadsheet I sent you for the community partner funding?
Yes.
Okay. Because I think we're going to go over that today. So if you have time to fill that out before one, that'd be great.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Thanks, Terry.
Bye-bye, you guys.